Okay, calling the meeting to order. The meeting, this meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being videotaped at RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street, Reading, Mass. for distribution to the community television stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name, address prior to speaking. It's the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. All right. Introductions, we have Neil Cohen from the Citizens Advisory Board here. Welcome Neil.
Thank you. Good to have you.
Good to have you. And we also have Vanessa Alvarado, the Select Board Liaison is also here. Welcome Vanessa. And we also have the Chair of the Select Board, Andy Friedman, as well. And Phil Piscino, will you be Secretary for us tonight?
Yep.
Thank you very much. And now, we're gonna open it up, well, a public comment, we'll start with you Neil, from the Citizens Advisory Board. Comments from your group?
No, there's no comments.
Okay, no comments. And then also Vanessa, do you have any comments at this time? All right. And is there any other public comment? Doesn't look like we have...
Any public here.
Any other public comment? Unless Andy wants to make a comment? No, all right, he's good, okay. And then we'll go right to the presentation of the Fiscal Year 2018 Audit. And we're gonna welcome Zach Ventross from Alanson Heath and PNC.
Thank you for having me. As Dave just said, my name is Zach Ventross and I was the Audit Manager in charge of the June 30, 2018, Reading Municipal Light Department Audit. If any of you have any questions, feel free to stop me and we can go over them at that time. First, before we get started, I just want to state that the financial statements are not presented on a comparative basis this year. And that is in, that was done to be in accordance with an AICPA recommendation to not present comparative financial statements due to the implementation of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75 this year. We'll get into Governmental Accounting Statement, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75 in a little bit. If I could, I'd like to have you turn to the first page after the table of contents. This is the first page of the Independent Auditor's Report. The Department has received a clean opinion. There are no exceptions and this is the best opinion you can receive from an independent audit firm and it is the same opinion that the Department has received in prior years. If I could, I'd like to have you turn to page three, which is the first page of Management's Discussion and Analysis. So pages three through six are the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And this is essentially just a summary of the results of operations. This section also discusses any major financial areas. So instead of simply reading this to you, if I could, I'd like to have you turn to page seven, which is the Statement in Net Position, where we'll discuss the same things there that are discussed here in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. The financial statements, speaking, are very comparable from year to year, except for the couple items that I'm going to highlight to you now. So, the very first one that I'd like to bring to your attention, about a quarter of the way down the page, it's under Non-Current Assets and it is titled Capital Assets, Net of Accumulated Depreciation. And that has a balance of $76,988,000. This is actually about a $2.1 million increase over the prior year. And the major capital project item that the Department worked on this year was the completion of the LED Street Light Project. And that had an increase to that line item of $715,000. The next line item I'd like to bring to your attention is about maybe halfway down the page, under Non-Current Liabilities. It is the first line item there and says, it is titled Net Pension Liability and that has a balance of $10,781,000. And this represents the RMLD's portion of the total unfunded liability for the Reading Contributory Retirement System. The Department's portion of that liability is about 29%. And the Reading Contributory Retirement System is approximately 79% funded, which is higher than average in the Commonwealth. The average in the Commonwealth is between 65 and 70%. So having a retirement system funded at 79% is an advantageous position for the Department to be involved with. Next line item I'd like to bring to your attention is Net OPEB Liability. And OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And that has a balance of $7,158,000. This is the big change from 2017 to 2018. And this big change is due to the implementation of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75. And Statement Number 75 is going to supersede Statement Number 45. This liability was recognized over a 30-year period in accordance with Statement Number 45. However, with Statement 75 that supersedes 45, that liability is now going to be recognized in full. So essentially what this is doing is pulling the liability that was presented in the back of the financial statements, now to the front of the financial statements and on page seven. The users of the financial statements aren't going to be surprised by this figure. They were well aware that this figure existed. And RMLD is not alone with the implementation of this accounting standard. Every municipality in the United States will have to implement this moving forward. On the bright side, the system has put funds aside. And as of June 30, 2017, there was approximately 2.0, I believe, bear with me a moment, it was $2.8 million, almost $2.9 million that they had set aside to begin to fund this liability. And that has a funding ratio of about 28.5%. This is an advantageous position for the Department to be in. In the Commonwealth, having other post-employment benefit liabilities that well-funded is rare on the town side, but on the light department side, that's about average. So again, that's a strong position for the light department to be in. That pretty much concludes everything I wanted to bring to your attention. Like I said, the balances from 2017 to 2018 were very comparative. In conclusion, I think that the things you should take away from this presentation is that the Department had positive operating results, has a well-funded OPEB trust fund, and there's no management letter. And what a management letter is, is if during our audit process, we look at the internal controls to ensure that assets are appropriately safeguarded. And if a recommendation would be, if we had a recommendation how to improve those internal controls, we would recommend them in a formal management letter. The Department did not have any management letter this year and is consistent with the prior years. There has not been a management letter in a number of years and it shows that the management of the Department takes internal controls very seriously and ensures that they are working adequately throughout the year.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Chair of the Audit Committee, Phil?
Yes. So the Audit Committee for the Town of Reading and the Board's Audit Committee, Mrs. Stenpak and myself...
Thank you.
...met before this meeting tonight to review in more depth what Zach has just presented. Couple items that I want to bring to the Board's attention, to the Commission's attention, is Zach kinda did a back-of-the-envelope calculation on operating cash.
That was correct.
And basically, he came up with a number that, available, and make sure I got this right, that is about 2.3 months of operating cash available. And actually, the industry standard is three months. So actually, the Department has available enough cash to fund operating cash for about 2.3 months each, in terms of what it has available cash. And we can go over the details on that if anybody would like to. The Audit Committee also had three requests that they brought up. There's a lot of discussion about the actuarial assumptions and the rate of return that was on, that's been used for the actuarial assumption. So they actually had three requests. There's actually, the investment rate used in the actuarial computation is 7.5%. The question has come up and the Audit Committee has asked the Board and the Department to look into why 7.5%. They also asked, you know, maybe what the asset mix benchmark is, to look at that in terms of, there's some sort of benchmark on that. And also, there was a question on if there's a percentage of fees that are there. The concern that the audit firm raised was that the actual report is a 7.5% and we're only earning about 2%, if I got all the numbers right. So, and that was the concern that's been raised and the Audit Committee has requested the Commission to kinda look into those three areas. And I do recommend, I do, it was a sense of the Audit Committee to look into that. And I do recommend that, you know, that we instruct the Department to look into it. I don't think we can take a formal vote on it.
We don't have to.
I think, you know, unless there's any objection, I think Colleen can just do it as a sense of the Board.
Yeah, Tom?
Yeah, I guess just for information for those listening in, so it's a recommendation, but it really is the responsibility of the town in the respect that they manage and process the cash. Is that correct, Phil?
Right. Because everything is done through the town treasurer.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I think they're all very good questions to ask.
Yeah.
Can we get a higher return?
Yeah.
Can we change the discount rate and what impact that might have?
Yeah.
And by asset class, what kind of returns are we getting and are we positioned correctly with a mix in our portfolio as a town?
Just to add, you know, as Zach mentioned, there is no management letter of anything that we need to be proved on and Zach was very complimentary of Wendy and her staff.
Nice to have Wendy.
Thank you, Zach and my staff.
And Zach.
Okay, and Colleen too, I should say, she's very complimentary, Colleen. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners accept the Audit Report from Alanson Heath Fiscal Year ended June 30, 2018, as presented.
Okay, wait a second.
Chuck.
Okay, although, oh, discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, 5-0-0.
Okay.
Great.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I just ask clarification? Did you assign me an action item for those three questions?
Yes.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Colleen, I can certainly give you a hand with that.
Yeah, sure.
I had them down to look at them, so I will speak with you and Wendy. I'll keep you in the loop and we can discuss what I come up with and we'll move forward with that. Does that work for you?
Yeah, of course, that's fine.
Yes.
So I'm just curious, so what's particularly Colleen's action?
Do you want to restate that, Phil?
Yeah, Colleen is actually, there were three items that the Audit Committee has requested that the Commission look into and also the Department. One is if there's any sort of fees that we're paying on the investments, the percentage, what's the magic, basically, what's the magic behind the 7.5% that's used in the assumption? Because of the fact that we're earning a less rate. And also, if there's some sort of benchmark on the asset mix as to...
Yeah, but I mean, I guess just a point of clarification, so the action would be for Colleen to contact the town accountant, right?
That's correct, or the town treasurer.
As opposed to go to...
That's correct.
That's correct.
And you also wanted to know if it was available, the return on each class...
And on each major class of assets.
For last year, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Got it.
Good.
All right, very good.
Any other questions?
Wasn't there one more where we were gonna find out whether money that's sitting in cash in our accounts could be, could be invested in a municipal bond, either locally or from another town, a high-rated bond?
Yes.
Saving fees, saving the town something, while we'd make a little bit more than the whatever...
Yes.
Yeah, so I've already assigned Chris Pollitt, Council, a question to ask. The funds that are available, are any of the funds available for potential borrowing? Chris is going to look into that. We said pension, no, but he'll look at the other funds that are available and he'll get us back, get back to us on that.
Okay.
Correct, thank you.
Great.
Very good.
I guess we are all set. Zach, thank you so much. When we're gonna see you again, Zach? How many months?
Last in, tomorrow.
All right, see ya.
Okay.
Okay, well, it looks like we're going back to you again, Phil, here.
We need to finish the vote on that, right?
No, I think we voted.
We voted.
We took the vote.
We voted.
We did after discussion. We did before discussion and after.
The second discussion threw me off.
So we have the Citizens Advisory Board meeting on November 14th. Phil?
Yeah, I attended the Citizens Advisory Board and Neil, if I get anything wrong, please correct me, okay? And basically, at that meeting, we, Mr. Underhill was introduced at that meeting as the new director, who you'll hear from a little bit later on. And also, there was, we kinda went over, you know, the different presentations from Hamed and Colleen. One of the items that was discussed, and it's kinda mixing into the next item too, and the last payment on the Subcommittee...
Do you want to just go to the next item?
Yeah, we can, if we want.
Let's just go to...
That's a good segue.
Yeah, all right. So the Subcommittee on the Payment to the Town of Reading, that was presented at town meeting. And it sounds like the CAW had a discussion about it as well.
Well, yeah, so the last, let me go back, actually, the Subcommittee on the Payment to Town did have a meeting since our last meeting. We did meet. The study that you have here, that was, Colleen put together, was just basically, you know, presented, not really presented formally, but, you know, a question, you know, whether anybody had any questions. There were no questions that came up on that.
And there was also some follow-up spreadsheets.
Some follow-up spreadsheets, yeah.
During different scenarios.
Thank you. Keep me straight, keep me straight. And so, one of the representative of the Select Board actually came up with a request that, he was concerned about what was presented in the study and he basically asked that the Citizens Advisory Board consider bringing in a mediator on that. That was his request.
Or a facilitator.
Facilitator. So, and the meeting kinda broke up after that, quite truthfully. I was hoping we'd have a little bit more discussion, but apparently, we did not. So anyway, I met, I went to the Citizens Advisory Board and had a discussion with them about the potential use of a mediator/facilitator. And there were three members there, Neil being one of them. And the concern, I mean, one of the concerns that was expressed by the Chair was he was concerned about any additional costs that may go to the ratepayers. He said, you know, he wanted to make sure there was not any additional cost of this going to the ratepayers. That was one, he expressed that opinion. The members there also expressed the opinion that they weren't sure what a mediator would be doing since there is no...
Counter-proposal.
There's no counter-proposal. All we have is just at this point, and we're also gonna investigate further on, is just Mr. Stenpak's and Mr. My opinion, and Mr. Stenpak and my own opinions as to what we think should be done. At the present time, we have no presentation, no proposal from the Select Board at this point. So there really nothing, at this point, they said they weren't sure what there is to mediate. And, you know, and so, that's one of the things that, you know, at this point, that, you know, we need to maybe kinda move this discussion along.
Okay.
I might add just a few things to that. And that's if you look at the notes from back in 1990, I believe, which talked about use of a facilitator or mediator, it did suggest that the Subcommittee needed to vote on whether to hire one in the first place. So it wasn't just a, let's get a mediator, we need to have the members of the Subcommittee vote that they decided that they needed one. So that was not discussed at the meeting. The other thing was, the mediator or facilitator would be hired at a maximum of $5,000, which for, to find a mediator of the right quality level with a number of years in the industry to understand the dynamics and dimensions of the RMLD as well as the town, I think would be very difficult to find in the first place, just my own personal opinion. And I don't think anybody will work for $5,000 to do that. So, we got some issues just sort of circulating around what was proposed 20 years ago. And so, as a mechanism to try and move away from that and to get to some reasonable mediation of our own with the Subcommittee and hopefully with the town, we have a proposal to make.
Yeah, so just a few things. One of the things that also happened after that meeting was, there was a request also that each group go back to its own individual groups and have a discussion as to what they wanted to bring forward and to come back to the Subcommittee on that. So the Subcommittee have something to discuss. So, kinda in that vein, I have a motion, right?
Can I just ask you, where was that request made, that we go back to their respective bodies and make a suggestion?
There was a discussion that took place afterwards, that it was a recommendation that came through an email.
An email?
Yeah, through an email. It wasn't formally at the meeting.
Yeah, but I guess that's the one thing I, I mean, I have concerns about is that, about the process, I guess.
Okay, well, you know, I felt it was a good request though.
Yeah.
That each group go back, each group go back and talk about, you know, among themselves where they wanted to go. Like I said, I was hoping at the Subcommittee meeting, we'd have much more discussion, but we really didn't get discussion at that meeting, much to my regret at that point. So, kinda in that vein, I have a motion that I'd like to make at this point, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
Okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners, that the RMLD Board of Commissioners propose a recommendation, now I want to stress the word recommendation, to the Subcommittee on the Payment, on the Payment to the Town of Reading, that the RMLD make a constant below-the-line payment to the Town of Reading for two years, 2019 and 2020, at the existent payment, payment made for fiscal, for the year 2019.
The nominal, the nominal payment, the same.
Right, which is approximately $2.48 million. The payment may be subject to any emergency issues such as severe weather damage or other catastrophic events faced by the RMLD. The payments are to be effective, and I'm actually gonna change this to, for periods after July 2nd, 2019, so it does not affect any of the current payments. In addition, we move to commission an independent consultant in 2019 to review the RMLD strategic study in May 2018, prepared by the RMLD General Manager, and to propose a transition plan for the year 2020 that provides an algorithm for calculating the below-the-line payment to the Town of Reading that is based on kilowatt-hour sales, which is actual energy usage, or some other applicable formula. That's the motion that I moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right, so discussion.
So let me just, let me just discuss, the idea is to get at least something to go forward. I'm hoping that Subcommittee can kinda come to a meeting of the minds and come up with something that we all can agree on.
Okay.
But at least, I'm trying to stimulate and get something going forward.
If I could add to that?
Go ahead.
This fixed payment, I think, is a good mechanism because it gives the town a known amount for their fiscal planning purposes for two years. If there's one thing that's been stressed continuously, certainly in the timeframe that I've been here, is that the town wants to know what they're going to receive on a yearly basis, whereas we're in an environment where our revenue is decreasing and we're subject to all kinds of other things happening in the world, so we can't predict. But we're trying to provide a high enough level to the town so that they can work with that and they know, they incorporate it into their budget. It doesn't cripple the capital investment, reinvestment program that RMLD has in place and it allows RMLD to remain within its charter to serve four towns. It's not just about Reading. This is about four towns that we have to serve. It gives the Town of Reading a head start for purposes of economic development to find, entice, and bring new electricity users to Reading. And by the way, our other three towns that we serve, that's true for them as well. So while we're painting a picture, you know, with this decreasing electricity usage, which is having a ripple effect to everybody, if there was a turnaround and there was more economic development in our four-town area that would increase the electricity sales, we actually might find it might go up. So there is that possibility. So it's not all downside. With an increase in kilowatt-hour sales, I just mentioned that it might increase, and the town and RMLD can examine and implement programs to increase electricity usage without hurting major other issues such as shave the peak. I mean, right, if we stopped shaving the peak, we'd use a lot more electricity, but our rates would go through the roof. So we have to kinda do the balance of, don't hurt that one while we're trying to develop more economic development within the town. So, you know, we're all on the same team here. We're really trying to do the right thing and we thought this would be a reasonable proposal moving forward that hopefully everyone can agree to and we can just put in place and move forward.
Can I just ask a clarifying question about this, your motion? So, the payment would stay the same, so we've already, Wendy, we've paid this year already? We've already paid through this year?
We have paid through September 31st, yes.
So when Phil's motion for two years, the payment would stay the same at $2.48 million, that means, we'd have four more payments?
So we're gonna make another payment at the end of the year for the next six months.
Because you do half-payments, yeah.
And then that would be four more payments additionally, yes.
Okay. And then, so that's what it'd be, the same payments, four more payments? And then, the study would just be about how to implement the transition, even though that would not happen in the next two years?
Well, the study also would be looking at the strategic, looking at the report that Colleen has done. And then if there's any other thing they see in that report, to come back.
It's really building on the report, the effort that was already done. And we think of it as a transition report, which would be an independent party performing it, so that there would be no question about...
Right. And it wouldn't take two years to do?
No, not at all.
We would lock in the payment for two years and any change that would happen, would happen in year three?
Correct.
Okay.
So it could be plus or minus. I mean, everyone thinks it's gonna be minus. I certainly, I mean, the trends suggest it's gonna be negative. We certainly don't want it to be negative and there's anything we can do to turn it around, we'll try our best to do that.
But also, the thing would be to stimulate some more discussion.
At the Subcommittee?
At the Subcommittee.
Okay.
So we would have something that I can go back when to say, this is what the Commission says.
So this is just a recommendation to the Subcommittee?
This is a recommendation to Subcommittee, this, all this is. This is just a recommendation.
This is not a final thing?
Not a final thing, no.
It's not a final thing.
Okay.
It's just a recommendation to Subcommittee, so I have something to go back on.
But that said, time is of the essence.
Right.
And we need to get, be able to shake hands and agree that this is the right way to move. We all agree about it and we move forward and stop spending time on committees and studies and things that just keep going over the same old thing. In the meantime, our revenue keeps declining.
Yes.
Sorry. In the essence of time, we really only have six months to make a decision because July 1, we need to know what the payment's gonna be.
For the following year?
For July 1 payment.
Be the same.
We're saying, we're saying the next four payments will be the same as the one you just made.
If that proposal's accepted.
If it's accepted, right. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay.
If the Subcommittee moves that and we vote on it, yeah.
So that we know what our July...
So you need to know by when?
Right, July 1st.
Okay.
Okay.
By the payment date.
Right, but I would hope that's something...
She's operating on the normal calendar.
But I'd hope that's something we could work out in the Subcommittee, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. I imagine you guys have some questions over here and there might be some comments.
Yeah, I just, if, these are, I guess, notes for the Subcommittee. I think because we're on a different fiscal year and everything else, I think it should be clear at what point the last frozen payment is made, if I can say it that way. Because, for example, you make a December 30th end-of-year payment, is that for 2021? So we just need to be really clear because that can be confusing. I just also, whatever gets hopefully finalized with the Subcommittee and subsequently voted, I think it would be useful, this notion of the town collaborating, I think it's more than a, I think we all believe more than platitudes, so I'm not suggesting it necessarily as a committee, but I don't, nothing happens without an intervention. So I think if we're sincere about economic development with the town, we know, and I know Dave has expertise in this area, we know other towns that reap enormous rewards, I mean, utilities from collaboration with the town. That could alone, you know, mitigate most or all of the concern. So I think some way to formalize that, whether it's part of a report in each meeting, I really believe that otherwise, it just won't happen. It'll get buried, you know, like a lot of other good ideas. The other thing is, I think, when we do finally move into the next payment beyond the frozen payments, I think a mechanism, since it's not gonna be as predictable as the past, where you just take the base and add, because that's very predictable, you know you always were gonna get X...
Plus inflation, yeah.
Plus whatever.
Yeah.
So if I'm in the town, I think I'd like to know six months in advance or something, I don't know what the number is, when that payment amount will be known, because they because they have to budget things in the town, they have to make decisions on, on personnel and everything else, so I think that should be part of the discussion at the Subcommittee.
Like there'd be a year notice of any change coming or something?
Well, I think, this might not be realistic for RMLD, but maybe, maybe a six-months notice, so January 1 or whatever, or June 30th of the following year, the rate will be, or as close as we can predict that payment, especially if it's going to vary in any degree up or down, just so they can, again, do their planning.
Yeah.
Can I, yeah?
Yes.
So I'm clear on this? So if we went with this, there are five more half-payments?
Is that right, Wendy, there's five more half-payments?
So there's a half, another half of payment.
Wendy, come on, yeah.
Another half of payment that's in December, then a full.
Next month?
Next month, then a payment next year in July, a payment next year in December, the fall in July, the fall in December.
So that would be two and a half years, or not really, you think it's like?
Well, we, we still owe the other half of this year, so it's a total of $6.2 million.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
So to Mr. O'Rourke's point, he's correct, so the, the reason we're moving to a calendar year is to get more in sync. So if we go with the two years, we will be out of sync. So we'd have to decide, is it going to be? So we've already committed to this payment that we're going to make on January 1, we've committed, it's done. So then we have to decide, are we making three more payments or five more payments?
Okay.
To get in sync with the calendar year.
All right.
To stay steady.
Well, do you want to modify, based on that information? Do you want to modify the motion in some way?
I think that's something that needs to be discussed.
The Committee could do that.
Yeah, the Subcommittee.
So the last payment would end in July, and it pays in advance through December 31st.
The reason why I said it, it wouldn't affect any payments in periods after July 2nd, so therefore the payment due December 3, the December will be the same, and that first payment in July would be the same. That's my, that's my thought.
So then you're thinking there's two more payments after that, and that would be?
Well, potentially, potentially two, maybe, maybe another.
You know, we'd be examining this on a yearly basis, right? We, we had, the formula is, it'd be this amount, and we'd examine it. So if, you know, a substation blew up, well, that affects everything, right? Because that's got a huge cost for us, and the payment would definitely go down. If, if, electricity usage spiked because Wilmington put in three more analog devices, then absolutely, maybe the payment would rise off of that basis, or North Reading, or some other town. We don't think that that's going to happen, because we did some backward calculations in terms of what it would take to offset 1% loss, if I'm correct here, and I think it was somewhere around, we'd need to add 20,000 residential facilities, correct me if I'm wrong, Colleen, or 80 new commercial establishments.
Over time to offset the?
Over time to offset a 1% decrease.
That was, may I speak?
Yeah.
If it's 1% decrease per year for five years, that's what you would need to offset.
For five years, okay, excuse me, that's correct.
If I can clarify.
Yeah, go ahead.
Right now, we make half-payments in July and December of a calendar year. So if we switch to a calendar year, it should, shouldn't have any impact. We're still making the full payment in a calendar year, no?
We're paying in advance of the next six months. So the payment that we would be paying at the end of the year is reflective of, of a commitment for January through June.
Of '19.
Okay.
May I, may I?
I thought I asked this question.
We find new things here.
Dave? Okay. Thanks, so this proposal reflects a lot of great thought, I have a lot of respect for, and it's well reasoned, and it, there's been a lot of hard work put into this, and the discussion has been excellent just now by the people who've talked about giving the sense of what the Department and what the members of the Commission are thinking about. The one thing I would point out is that just as a matter of process, the, the motion that was just read, is, you know, it's not on the agenda. And so I think that it would be better to have the discussion have been aired. It's good that the discussion was aired, but that, but to, but to be voting on something tonight when there wasn't an action item on the agenda or the text of the motion, to me, leads me to not want to take a vote. That it's more appropriate that we've given the sense of members of the Commission to the Subcommittee, and that it should go there, and there should be a public process where it's, it's sort of on the agenda formally.
Well, if you wish to call it a resolution and charge us with, as members of the Subcommittee, to take it to the Subcommittee for testing, that's fine, too, that would work.
The thing is, as worded, it's, it's, it's a recommendation of the full board, which essentially says that, you know, for the first time after 20 years, we're, we're, as a body, we're voting to change the payment and effectively end these increases that have been in, which is a fairly momentous step. And it, 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 all I'm saying is that I would rather that this was on the agenda and was on the agenda at the December meeting, after hearing the sense of the board, getting the resolution, getting a finality out of the Subcommittee, and then coming back to us with, on it.
If I may?
Yeah.
Having sat through the Subcommittee a couple of times, resolution seems to be a hard thing to get to.
Right.
And so, without having a fact set that's involved, having everyone read the fact set, having differing opinions and some data not being presented by various participants, we have to move this forward, we have to take the bull by the horns and just move this forward, that's my personal opinion, I think it's Phil's personal opinion. And so we're asking basically the rest of the, the board here to support us in moving this forward. And we'll take it as a resolution, we'll present it to the Subcommittee and see what happens. And we don't want it to stall, I mean, it's stalled for a long time.
Yeah, go ahead.
But, but forget about the, the functionality of the Subcommittee or how well that's working, because it hasn't worked very well. It needs to be brought to a close, but leaving that aside, it's still, I come back to the fact that it's a motion that was just read that isn't on the agenda on a momentous item, and that there should, there should be a posting of it and an opportunity for comment. And that all, I would just prefer that, that the motion was published and was at our next meeting, and, you know, we just got it now, and the public is just hearing about it now. And even though it's a resolution or recommendation, it's still like the board saying, we want to change the payment, and it's just happening at the meeting. So it's just really a public process question, so for that reason.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, let me, this is, you know, understand, we're not changing anything. Nothing is changing. All we're doing is making, sending you off, this is the board's recommendation. The Select Board should come back with their own recommendation, and then we can have a meeting of the minds, I would hope.
So this is just a charge to go to the Subcommittee with an idea?
Right, and that's just, so that we've got, you know, so that we can get at least moving on this. I mean, there is, there is a concern.
Do we even have to vote on it?
There is a concern that I have about delaying. The Select Board's representative is not running for reelection, so I don't know how that's going to affect the Subcommittee going forward at this point on that. So, you know, and, you know, time is not our friend.
Can you read the motion again?
Okay. I can amend it to make it a resolution, if you want.
Well, whatever it is.
Yeah, so the motion that I read is, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners propose a recommendation to the Subcommittee on the Payment to the Town of Reading that the RMLD make a constant below-the-line payment to the Town of Reading for two years, 2019 and 2020, at the existent payment made for year 2018, which was $2.48 million. This payment may be subject to any emergency issues, such as severe weather damage or other catastrophic events faced by the RMLD. The payment to be effective for periods after July 2nd, 2019. In addition, move to commission an independent consultant in 2019 to review the RMLD strategic study of May 2018, prepared by the RMLD General Manager, and to propose a transition plan for the year 2021 that provides an algorithm for calculating the above-the-line payment to the Town of Reading that is based on kilowatt sales, which is actual energy usage or some other applicable formula.
Okay.
It's below the line.
Yes.
What did I say, above the line?
It should be below the line, correct.
That's right, didn't I say that?
I thought you had.
Didn't I say that?
You meant below the line.
It's, it's in, it's in the actual document.
It's in the wording, it's in the wording.
And then Tom, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of quick, I, I think, following on Dave's, I think a little bit of the confusion, in hindsight, we probably should have had the discussion followed by the motion instead of the motion, even if we didn't vote on the motion, but so that's just a future process.
Right.
I was just going to say, because I can see this will definitely become a, a problem, and I don't mean to be, sound overly simplistic, but maybe the Subcommittee could create a little chart with December 30th, 2018, and what the payment will be. June 2019, what the payment will be. December 2019, what the payment is. And June 2020, what the payment is. And if all those are frozen at that rate, you just plug them in, then it's memorialized, because, believe me, if we use calendar years, people are going to be thinking, you know, town fiscal years. And then whatever the new payment's going to be, it's not known, the, the next payment, December 2020, can say two TBD payment.
Right, so you're saying just, if they do, the Subcommittee reviews this, come back with the date and the payments?
A little chart, right, a little chart. Forget the words, we use the word, but the chart.
The chart, yeah. Dave, I have a question for you.
I think that, go ahead.
Chair?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Would you like me to just prepare that so it's visual for, for when you go to the Subcommittee?
Sure, that'd be great.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. And Dave, if, if we follow the process correctly, would have, would you, would have been okay with this? Are you okay with this in spirit, I guess is my question?
I, I think so, it's, again, it's, it's more that, I wish this had been a discussion from the experts who have been on the Committee, and that we were, we were, it was on the agenda, and there was public comment, and after that is the proper time to be voting on a, sort of essentially a change in policy of this, of this magnitude. Because it's essentially saying, I know it's a recommendation, it's a, it's a, it's a, what's the word?
Just to move the ball down the field a little bit?
It's a proposed resolution, but it's still like the, the request is for the full board to basically say, we're, we're stopping what we've been doing for 20 years, we're changing it.
But Dave, someone's got to do something. Someone's got to move it forward and put a stake in the ground. And if we don't put a stake in the ground, no stakes will occur.
All I'm saying, all I'm, all I'm saying is it, it's a process, it should be on the agenda, and that's all.
Yeah, just, may I?
Go ahead.
So, I agree with both of you, I think that the process could have been a little different from discussion, but I also agree, I mean, those of us who sit on town meeting, I mean, for, for reasons we don't have, it's not about blaming anyone. Collectively, all of us involved, it's taken too long, so something has to be done. I don't view this as a vote, to me, the opportunity for public comment is after the Subcommittee meets and they come back with a refined, final recommendation, and that goes back to here, we have that discussion, and that's a public meeting, appropriate, and it has to go back to the CAB, so.
And, and per the comment, excuse me, but if I may?
Yeah.
Per, per the comment of taking it back to our respective groups, we did bring it back to our respective group, we're discussing it right now. We would ask that the Selectmen take it back to their group and talk about it as well.
And the CAB, and the CAB also.
And the CAB, excuse me, and the CAB as well. So we got to move the ball forward.
Right. Neil, do you want to make a comment from a CAB perspective?
Well, we only had three members at the board in the last meeting, as Phil said, so Phil made a presentation, and we listened, and we, you know, talked a little bit upon it, but we didn't make any type of low resolution or anything, and we postponed any further discussion until the next meeting.
You don't have a reaction to this, though?
No, I think we have to move something forward. I mean, I, I've sat in these Subcommittee meetings as well, and as Phil said, the last one was very brief. And it, it's difficult to get the five members to meet and to find a time where we can all meet at the same time as well.
Right.
The time we, actually throws around some dates. Right. We get a date, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
We get a date, and then we get another date, we got to cancel it. So the CAB has a meeting scheduled for December 17. We don't know if we have anything to discuss, but we left it on there just in case it came up. And if we can get forward on this, then maybe we can have a discussion.
We can have a discussion about it.
On the 17th of December.
Okay.
Or 19.
Yes, I want to invite Vanessa to make a comment.
Yeah, why don't you come on up?
As well, Vanessa Alvarado, the Liaison from the Select Board to RMLD. And Andy, you're welcome to make a comment after as well, if you'd like to.
As a point of clarification, what happens at the two-year mark? Is that included in the proposal?
What happens at what, excuse me?
At the two-year mark, after we, after the locked-in payments, what happens next?
Is the assumption that?
I would hope we don't reach that point, but not quite.
Well, the, the assumption would be that halfway through the year, we'd get an idea of whether our revenue was still decreasing at the same rate, because this year it decreased not at 1%, but as I understand it, it decreased 2%. So we went down 2%, not 1% per year. And we've been experiencing this for the last couple of years, so it's not, it's an ongoing phenomenon, unfortunately, but it's fact-based. So we would hope that within the first half of the year, we could make a decision about what's happening to it and what can we afford to pay. And we'd all love to say, it's actually leveled out or going up, and we can continue to make standard payments or increase them somewhat.
But I, you know, to Vanessa's question, I, the way I understood the motion is that, that over the next few months, we would have a new formula that we could, okay, that's, the goal is that we have some new information, that we create a formula, so that after the two years, we would now know what the next payment should be in advance, right?
And, and today's formula is actually mixed, right? Because the above-the-line payments are on net plant, but they're distributed on a percentage of kilowatt-hours used by each town. And the below-the-line payments are consumer price index times net plant, as I recall. So there's two different algorithms and methodologies already in place, it's not, I mean, is it complicated? Yeah, but we've been using it for 20 years. So changing it is not a big deal. The change is, do they, I, I know, in a minute, the change, if we need to change, weren't we doing this because we need to face reality and that we're going to run out of money? And we're running out of money to fund the RMLD and keep the reliability high. And nobody in the audience there or in this room wants to see that happen. On a personal basis, if your income goes down, you stop spending. You have to, otherwise, you know, you, you end up in debtor prison or somewhere else. Terrible. So, so the point is, we're facing the reality of the situation, hopefully, ahead of time and aggressively, so that we can deal with it. And we want the town to be our partner in this thing, too, as well, and not just be, give us our money, give whatever it is, we want our money. We would love to give you the money, we'd mint the money if we could, but we have to be responsible to not just Reading, but to the four towns that we serve. And we have to keep coming back to that, it's not just about Reading.
Vanessa, did you, go.
Yeah, because I, I can appreciate Vanessa's concern. I think at some early point or midpoint this coming year, hopefully we'll have the study completed, and we can start, the payment's already frozen for two years, but we can start tying the kilowatt-hours to the formula and see what the?
The payment is not frozen for two years, again, this is just a recommendation.
Right, no, I'm just saying if this?
We're not taking any solid position.
Right, we're saying if this comes through, it would be solid.
I mean, you know, the Selectmen could come forward with their, the Selectmen, sorry, wrong term.
Right.
The Select Board could come forward with their own proposal that says, we freeze it for five years.
Let me, so let me restate, if, if the motion were to be approved as stated, okay? The payment is frozen for, for, for payments. Before that, we'll be able to track the new formula, because we'll have kilowatt sales, and we'll have some indication if it's draconian, if it's the same, if it's better. And as I said earlier, I think if you can put in a, the Subcommittee can consider having a six-month notification period, so, because the problem is, you could have it tracking even until the year, and then the new year could have a drop, right? We don't know what that's going to look like.
Right.
But with a six-month notification, now the town has an opportunity to say, okay, what does that do to our, our running of the town? And then I would also say, there's all the, always the opportunity for the town and RMLD to get down and say, okay, what do we think, or are there other options? But I mean, that, what we're trying to do is be predictable for RMLD, but also sensitive to the town's spending, so that's how I view it.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I, I just want to clarify, because this was mentioned at the town meeting. It's not the revenues going down, it's the kilowatt-hour sales, right? The revenue's not going down.
Fair enough.
Because I raised the rate.
Yep.
So I can keep raising the rate, but we have boundaries, which, you know, the mission is to stay competitive. We're in the middle of the pack, which we're above the middle of the pack right now, because I'm trying to fix the system. Sure, you can just keep going up, we can collect, you know, rate of return, 8% every year. We'll be higher than national grid, because I'm still going to have to fix the system. So we have boundaries that we're also trying to stay in. And staying in the middle of the pack is one of them. And I don't want to keep, yeah, you're going to have some rate increases And I don't want to keep, yeah, you're going to have some rate increases, because, you know, the cost of metals going up, you know, the cost of transformers, all of the storms and stuff that happen in the south.
Power supplies going up.
The cost of wires going up. You know, you have to have engineers, you can't just let everyone go. I mean, so there are boundaries that we have to stay within, in this whole calculation that I stated in my study, but I just wanted to clarify, because I know that was pointed out at the town meeting.
Thank you.
Not to criticize you, John, I just...
It's okay, I should have known better. Kilowatt-hour sales, I'm very familiar with kilowatt-hour sales.
Well, the other thing, too, is if you raise the rates, then you make economic development less attractive.
Right.
That's the other part of the equation.
And you're taxing ratepayers, basically.
It's an unvoted tax, yeah. Vanessa, other questions, comments from you?
That was all, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd just like to wrap up what I was saying. I mean, I haven't heard similar concerns as mine voiced by the Select Board liaison or by the Redding CAB member. So, I mean, if there, if, if my concerns on those fronts aren't shared, then, you know, I, I respect this process and I'm prepared to support it. I sort of wish that it had said, the move that it was a recommendation of the two subcommittee members, but, because I'm just concerned about what I said before.
No, you make a good point about process, we should...
After listening to Neil and Vanessa and Andy, if you have anything to add, I don't know if you...
Yeah, Andy, would you like to make a comment?
That was it, I mean, I just, I guess if you're here and you want to say something, because you're the chair of the Select Board, I would like to hear from you, but don't want to put you on the spot.
Come on up, Andy.
Come on up, Andy.
Come on up.
Come on down.
I will reissue the Robert's Rules of Order to everyone on the board, which I did once before. It's a big thing, book about this big.
I have an amendment to the motion when you get it, when you get it, Mo.
Don't know why you put the speaker in the hot squeeze. We don't have a quorum. Vanessa, it's appropriate for her to speak, she's the liaison, so technically, I'm a private citizen right now. And, but I would like to say that the same people who elect this board elect the Select Board.
I agree.
In the best interests of the town.
Right, I agree.
And I'd like to do right by them, I think we all would.
I think we all would.
And it's, it's unfortunate that there's been this lager, this jam, and I look forward to working with, with all of you and the Select Board in resolving this issue, getting past it, moving forward, and doing what's best for, for the town, and as you say, you have to take care of your ratepayers as well. So, that's the spirit in which I hear this, and I look forward to finally solving this.
Right, thank you, Andy. While we share those sentiments as well, thank you.
Indeed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I also share those same sentiments with Andrew, that we can all work it out. I do have a motion, an amendment to my motion, if you would accept, if it's a second, I would accept it. I'd like to, you know, start by saying, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution to propose.
Okay.
So, we add in the word, at the beginning of the move, is added at the beginning, and after the RMLD Board of Commissioners, we add, we adopt, adopt a resolution, and then to propose, and then the rest of the motion reads the same.
I would accept that.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Well, I think we should, we can vote on it now, right?
Yep.
All right, we have plenty of discussion. All those in favor? Five zero zero? All right, the ball's moving.
Dave, may I ask, just a...
Yes.
It might be helpful earlier than later to get a subcommittee meeting scheduled, maybe it already has been.
My question would be to the select representatives here, when do you think you would like to have a meeting? When you can discuss, you know, present your, what you, how your feelings? Would you come up, come up to the, need to come up to the microphone? Sorry. Cable TV, cable TV, you know?
Yeah, I have to do this, yeah.
So, look in the phone.
Okay. As long as it's not a quorum.
The subcommittee would have to meet first, from what I understand.
Yeah, that, my question is really, get a date for the subcommittee to meet.
But the question is, why would, why would the subcommittee have to meet first? I mean, I, the idea is, is that, you know, we're now on record, we're on, at least got a resolution here. I mean, I wouldn't want to go into a meeting and have the selectmen say, we need to, okay, thank you very much, we'll go back and bring this back later. I would think that maybe the, the Select Board should...
The motion, but, go ahead, yeah.
My recommendation would be for us to go back, report to our board, put it on a future agenda for the beginning of December, so that we, as a board, can discuss their proposal based on that, based on feedback and rate, then move forward to the subcommittee meeting, perhaps at the, December's not a great month, at the end, early January.
Yeah, I would like to meet as soon as we could, that's fine with me.
Yeah, that's, that's doable.
Right, okay. You know, please understand, this is to try to move the ball down the field.
I, I...
A football announcer's terminology.
Very good.
We won't say when.
My one disclaimer is that we are in budget season.
I understand that.
For February, so I'm going to thank you now, Tracy, for all the emails you're...
So, so this will be in the, our board minutes, right? But perhaps we should get a copy to you beforehand, just a straight, whatever this is.
Right, yeah.
I'll have to find the time to put this on the agenda for the board. I think it can be done in December, even though it is budget season, and it's been necessary to have a lot of meetings.
If it would be helpful to have either Phil or both of us there to also add any color commentary, we'd be happy to do it, assuming we're able.
Yeah.
And if not, you'd do it yourself, that's fine, too.
We'll have to bring a suit of armor, maybe.
First of all, it's a public meeting, so I couldn't stop you if I wanted.
Of course.
It's a trick question, Andrew. It's just whether I want to.
In all seriousness, if you'd like us to be there, please let us know, and you can, at the time and place.
I think it makes sense for someone to be there.
Yeah.
Same as Andy and I are here for this discussion, I think.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Some hard reputation.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for coming to this meeting, we appreciate it.
No more questions for Andy and Vanessa.
They got extra exercise tonight, no charge.
So, just, and then the third part, part of you, Neil, that would meet the CAB timetable also?
That's right, yeah.
In January?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're going to do a copy of the whole thing here.
We're done with that, I know.
So, Tracy, why can you circulate dates?
And Tracy, would you get Neil a copy of, of exactly what the proposal is here as well?
I have my copy, I can go over with, with, after the meeting with her, okay.
Don't forget Wendy's chair.
I'm ready to go now.
All right.
All right, then we're on to number nine, the General Manager's Report.
All right, thank you. I'm actually going to ask for a delay in the, in the policies, but I do have a clarification discussion on one of them. The existing strategic plan policy delineates four strategies, a mission, and a vision statement. And the reason for the delay is, we was supposed to meet with Mike Prisco, the Chair of the Select Board for North Redding, was going to facilitate our strategic meeting for management, and we couldn't do it on Wednesday, so I got to push that off, so I'd rather just give you all the policies at once. So, I'm going, we're going to change the four strategies and tweak them a little bit and make sure we add some economic development to them, and send them back to you this, this week, and then we'll just present them in, in December, but you'll get like four or five of them. We're still going to hold off on the OPEB and the pension one, we have some more things to work with Chris on that, which is what we were working on earlier. So, is that okay?
Yes.
The next item was the AP process, and...
We've got a spill over here.
Oh, you spilled some.
Tom, don't warn me.
Spill an aisle of time.
Looks like he's all right.
Do you need to stop it?
He's using, he's using the motion he just wrote, so sop it up.
Stacy, thank you for positioning.
No, I did not use the motion.
Away from Phil.
Oh, God, Zooks.
All right, Colleen, continue.
So, we talked last time about the accounts payable process, and Tracy and I developed a procedure and review sheet, because right now, when you come in and sign the AP, there's a little review sheet, and, and we've put together a chart. There's two things when you come in, there's, you may ask for clarification, like you, you want to sign the warrant, but you'd like some additional information, that's one. Two is, I don't really want to pay this one, I'm going to pull it out, but you must still sign the warrant, you can't hold the warrant up. And what happens is, that question gets filled out on the sheet, and we tried very hard to make sure that we get an acceptable answer on that question, so that invoice can go back into the warrant, because if not, it's very time-consuming that we do it. But it all still has to go to the town that same time period. So, let's say you asked on a particular issue, and you say, well, you know what, I don't want to sign this, technically, we've already taken the service on, but if you wanted to pull it and keep it pulled, and you want us to rerun the AP, we can. But does that, does that make sense? So, there's two things, there's clarification, where you'd fill out the form and say, I want more information on this, sign the warrant, and then there's pull one and sign the warrant, but in both cases, you can't hold the warrant up.
It's still going to be paid.
It still has to be signed by you, but you can...
The one you pull will not be paid until you are happy with it.
Oh.
Right, but what, that's, that's what I said, what we try to do is, we try to get you an answer quick enough to get it back into that warrant, otherwise, it would be pulled, not paid, and put into the following week.
So, okay, so you want to get it done quickly, if we do pull?
We do try to get the answer back quickly, but it still has to be signed, whether that invoice gets paid or not.
Okay, yes.
Is this something new? Because the last time I signed, I didn't see the, here's where you pull the...
Yeah, we haven't changed the form yet.
No, there's no change, it's just a discussion at this point.
Oh, but, so maybe a suggestion would be that, you know, it's a notation, maybe the form has a way to note whether you're pulling it or not.
Correct, we're splitting it in half, and the only reason why I didn't send this out is because I had heard a rumor about doing this online. Is that a rumor? No?
No, I suggested that, I will own up.
Okay, so...
Not for accounts payable, as for payroll.
For accounts payable. So, Wendy and I are going to talk about this more. We typically, we make copies of the invoices, but there's also the POs, and there's a lot of things, and Wendy and I are going to look into it. So, I will send you the, you know, the, all I'm doing is taking the existing thing that you were filling out, to pull it or not pull it, and just clarifying it, I will send that to you, and Wendy and I are going to look into whether or not we can scan everything in, and you can do it online, because we want to keep up with the technology as well. But you will have the same exact documents in front of you there that you would at home.
Right, and if you're copying it, you're really scanning it anyway, so all you need is the memory to be able to do it.
Well, do you want, go ahead.
We only copied the...
Come to the microphone, turn the microphone.
It's good.
Wendy, there's, that under the table is very suggestive.
I didn't say we could, I said we're looking into it.
Okay, it's not done yet, yeah.
No, I didn't say we could, I said we're looking into the rumor, the request.
Okay, so, what was the question? Wait, what was I talking about?
Online, online.
Online approval by commissioners.
Okay, so for the town of Redding, the, the process is that we send them a copy of just the invoice, they do not need any backup information, because we've already done our due diligence in-house with, I think, three, four different signatures.
Yes, right.
So, they just need a copy of the invoice. So, if you want it, do it online through automation like this, we would have to scan in everything, so that would take a lot more effort.
Oh, that's ridiculous. We all live in town, you know?
So, I'm just telling you that.
That's good, okay.
Happy, yes.
To that same theme, although I understand it's, it would be a hassle to scan all that, what, it would be better, I think, to have an iPad instead of a written piece of paper and a pen to write down what your question is in some little line, and then there's an actual electronic copy that you get, that then you can share what the person actually asked with everybody else, without deciphering chicken scratch or summarizing it or...
Hey, that's my writing, Tim.
I'm talking about myself here.
Okay.
I can't write anymore with a pen. And also, I just, it means there's, it means the actual question that was asked gets relayed, you know, as opposed to some rewording of it.
Yes, Tracy, I, I mean, I don't think that you would have a problem putting an iPad or getting them set up with, you know, it could be a direct email to, you know, the right people at the right time.
That's fine.
You might be able to set up a, a form like SpryPoint.
Sure.
Where you fill it out, you could go, and it has an automatic emailing destination.
So, just to be clear, you'd be still coming in, but rather than filling the form out, there's an iPad, we could go in and get the form and sign the form and make the comment.
Yeah, you just type your question in on the iPad.
Type the question on the form, good idea.
We're certainly not opposed to moving forward, but we're just not ready right now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it, and the detail is, no sense, looking at the invoices, the detail isn't there, I mean...
Right, exactly.
Really not proving...
I believe this was all coming up, because I questioned a very large bill from Duncan and Allen, correct? That's basically one of the, and I don't know that...
It was at that same meeting, there might have been a couple of issues around this.
Yeah, we, we still owe a presentation on, on the legal, we just haven't had the agenda space for it, so we're still doing that. No, this was more the process of just making sure that if you have a question and you want to pull it, that you, you still have to sign it. We can't, we can't wait for the answer, it still has to go in, it has to go to the town.
We're just trying to clarify the process, because our hands are tied with the town of Redding, as you know, and if they do not get the warrant, they will not cut any check. You know, unless we ask special, you know, with holidays and stuff, we do ask for special circumstances, you know.
So, you always sign the warrant, but if you don't want a bill to be paid, you so noted on this report.
So, what happens is, when you sign the warrant, because we're trying to prevent you from coming back in, you sign the warrant, you tell us you want to pull an invoice, and if we do not respond to you with sufficient information that you're happy with, we will redo the warrant, we will have to void the invoice and the check and everything in our accounting system, and then, then that signed copy with the, it will be actually hand-crossed off, literally, sent to the town hall, letting them know that this was pulled. So, all the documentations there, that you are pulling this check for more clarification, this invoice, you've signed the rest of them, you're good to go, and the process doesn't delay, and you don't have to come back in to sign it, okay? Because we do have a timeline with the town of Redding.
So, maybe that iPad could have a, a line that says, are you pulling one item? If so, which one?
Sure.
And then that solves this whole problem.
Sure.
That's the second form we have. Second grid.
And I heard about a strategic plan, too.
Oh. I, I just want to clarify what, I know it wasn't intentional, but at, maybe it was last meeting, we did have a lot of discussion, I know the legal bill was one, but in the whole process, but I, am I speaking really for myself? But I have to say that the process of raising a question and getting a response, and I'll say it's through Tracy, because she's the person who manages it, I personally have been very satisfied, and I think there's always been a reasonable answer, or if there wasn't a reasonable answer, was always noted that if this isn't satisfactory, please come back, so...
Indeed.
If we, in the heat of battle, if we...
Oh, no.
If we threw, threw, threw anyone under the bus, it certainly isn't meant to be Tracy.
I think Tracy threw herself under the bus. Didn't need to, there was no need, you're doing a great job.
I guess, absolutely, Tracy.
As, as arduous as the process is, I mean, the clean audit opinion proves.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Congratulations again.
I always thought they should give you a letter saying that, that when you do a good job, you get no letter, when you do a bad job, you get a letter.
Or a gold star, at least.
Something wrong with that process.
Okay.
Okay.
So, what are we doing? We're still on, Colleen?
Yeah, so, next, I'd just like to, to introduce our, our new Director of Integrated Resources, Chuck Underhill. Chuck, do you want to come up and say a few words, and then make your, your Integrated Resources presentation?
Well, right into the fire, huh?
Go right into them.
Yeah, all right.
Jeez.
Jeez. What happened to onboarding in our institution?
This is it.
Learned by experience.
Mr. Underhill is not a stranger here.
Yes. Welcome, Chuck. It's RMLD.
Welcome to RMLD.
Welcome back, actually.
Yeah.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
A few words. So I have been on board almost a month now, four weeks. And I have been charged with figuring out what's going on, sort of getting organized, meeting the team. And oh, by the way, you're making a presentation at the next board meeting. So what I wanted to do this evening was update you. About a year ago, you received a presentation on a program that was being implemented to help reduce power supply costs. This was a program using Nextera, one of the vendors, and it was called Transaction Facilitation Agreement, or TFA for short. The objective of the program was to mitigate risk, to stabilize rates, and to secure lower pricing. As part of the process, we worked to define and execute on price triggers and to be consistent with the risk mitigation strategy here at RMLD. Over the course of 2018, there were roughly 10 of these triggers that were executed. They resulted in purchases through 2018 and 2019 of blocks of energy. And year-to-date through 2018, the net reduction in power supply cost is $1.9 million. We expect that that will continue through the rest of this year and the sales will continue through 2019. We are not planning any triggers in 2019. We have received a follow-on proposal from Nextera to do physical load following. One of the things that happens in the wholesale market is that we bid our load in. We are subject to two types of risk when that happens. One, that there's an error, not a mistake, but a difference between the forecast and the actual result. This results in unplanned power supply expenses. In addition, we are subject to volatility in the wholesale price market. The proposal from Nextera, and I'm giving you a heads up on it this evening, it'll be brought back for further review and disposition at the next meeting. But the, the program basically looks at eliminating load forecasting risk by simply being load following. They guarantee to meet the exact load, whatever it is. So there is no load following risk on that. It takes price volatility out because they will have a fixed price that, that we will pay. It maintains our renewable resource portfolio and allows us to engage other resources going forward that meet our strategic objectives. Whether it is a renewable or whether it is a non-carbon resource, whether it goes to support other program activities that we are doing, such as the Shred the Peak program. All of those get adjusted in the portfolio and then Nextera picks up the balance on that. So.
Is that how they reduce their risk then? By, by buying even larger blocks so they know that
Yes.
we can be load following instead of load projecting?
Yeah. They, we are, in the parlance of the market, an aggregator. We take small loads, like residential, commercial, and believe they're not even some of the large industrial customers, and we aggregate them into a single load. And that load goes into the market. Nextera is taking us, along with a number of other entities, and making an even bigger aggregation. That means that they are able to cut the, the pieces into smaller and smaller bites, be a lot more accurate with what they're doing. They're absorbing the, the price indifference with, with the resources that they have, and essentially taking the market out of play. So.
Very clever.
It is.
It is.
So basically, we looked at the energy budget and for 2019, what, what we had projected. The energy budget was $28.9 million. Nextera is bidding this in at the Mass Hub, including their fees, all-in. Pricing on this is $27.7 million. Net expected savings to Reading is $1.2 million. There is one piece of risk that is left. Reading is in the NEMA market, the Northeast Massachusetts market. Nextera transacts at the Mass Hub. There may be some slight energy price differences between the two. But we have a $1.2 million window of opportunity. That is, by the way, in addition to the savings that we are already achieving under the TFA. So we think this is.
And this is going to be done on a, on a yearly basis, or?
The first year, the 2019, is a pilot. And one of the things that is encouraging is that Nextera will be on their best behavior in the pilot. Because they're very interested in, in making sure that it works. We have negotiated with them a quarterly review and tweaking if we find that there are things that neither side anticipated that we can do to improve the product or the results. This is a one-year pilot. At the end of 2019, or nearing the end of 2019, we're going to take a look at both of the options that Nextera has worked with us on and evaluate whether it's one, the other, or both, that can provide savings to RMLD and how those will work going forward with some of the other things that we want to do. This includes the, the programs to develop electric loads through electric vehicles, HVAC systems, et cetera. So it's putting everything into the Integrated Resource Plan and seeing how it all works out.
With the reduction in our kilowatt hour usage, how was that impact in the plan? Do you have any sense about that?
Well, 2019 has the forecasted loads in it. I haven't had a chance to go into all of the details, so I'll have to get back to you on, on where some of that load sugar's off. But right now, that's in there, that's in the numbers. Going forward, we'll have to see what the programs that we're looking at will do to either stabilize or increase kilowatt hour sales.
Sounds like a great program. And once you get hooked on this, you're probably in it for the long term, right?
Can I maybe see, so to go back from the beginning, if you recall, several years ago, when, well, when I came, actually, it's been five.
Five years?
Five-year pin, yes.
Oh, happy anniversary.
Power was essentially being purchased once a year here. So there was a lot of opportunity to change it into tranches. You know, price and time triggers based on four-year historical values and stuff like that. So you're buying more often. And so I asked you in a strategic plan if we could change that once a year to run this pilot. And as Chuck has done his analysis, and so glad he's here, hitting the ground running, because this is a specialized niche. You know, tell me what the value was for year one for our first pilot. And so it was a success. And now Chuck's going to lead us into the second pilot. We're going to try the load fo, uh, pro, uh, load following. We're going to continue the TFA for the future so we can still lock in past 2019. And at the end, when Chuck gives a presentation, we'll, we're going to come up with what our power strategic is going to look like. And it might be a combination of the both, a little bit. We're not really sure yet. But you can see, when we put this one on, you can't keep squeezing it more and more and more.
Right. That's where I was going, yeah.
So we're getting a little bit more out of it. But we're load following on a year that we've already squeezed it. So to say we were going to get even more is great. But the market keeps changing. So you can't say, okay, this worked great. We're going to do this for 20 years. You have to keep looking at it, which is great, because Chuck will look at it every year and, and we'll just keep tweaking it. So as long as you guys are all happy with the fact that this strategic thing is going to keep moving based on, on the market and the environment, you know, environmental concerns and things like that, we'll, we'll keep going. But there will be a point where, don't put it in my evaluation, we want you to get this percentage more. I mean, it gets to the point where I'm squeezing to death, so.
I'm curious how, Chuck, you go back and figure out that we made, was it 1.9 million we saved last year or something? How do you figure it out? How do you know what you would have paid the old way?
Because the contract sets up what's called the mark or the, or the price point. And this is a comparison of mark to market. So if we had been buying in the market, we would have paid the 1.9.
What is it, a software program you can plug in? Or is it, does Nextera feed that to you?
Nextera gave it to us, but yes, it is a software program and we have the data. We could run the model ourselves. I would have to build it. Colleen, can I have more resources?
You are taking a number of points. You're not playing Monday morning quarterback every single day, all, every hour.
Right.
You're picking points along and doing your comparisons and comparisons and comparisons. So I'm not, we're not picking the day that we would have, the mark to market would have been the most.
Right.
Picking multiple days and then.
So you're looking at what Nextera did for you, what the market was when that price.
Yeah, but more than just the one day. I wouldn't pick the day that it was the most expensive, because then it would look like I saved the most.
Right, okay.
So you're picking multiple days.
Got it.
So it's like, yeah, that was going to be my next question.
Going out on very, very dangerous territory here, I'm, I'm going to make a minor, very, very minor, practically meaningless correction to what Colleen just said.
Wendy must be the guy.
It is not a evaluation of a slice. Okay? This is, when we buy a block or a tranche of power, we buy a certain amount of it over a period. And so every hour that's included in that sale at that price is included in the analysis. So the 1.9 is a cumulative savings for all of the tranches since they have been in effect.
Okay.
So it is, it is an actual historical analysis and it is a summary.
So it's a very accurate number of the savings?
Yes, it is.
Well, that's, I apologize. That's an update from my last discussion with Nextera. So thank you, Chuck, for coming. You.
Well, what they were, what they were saying at the meeting, because I was there, is that it changes every time you run it. And the reason that it changes is there were more kilowatt hours that are in there and there are more variable hours of market pricing that are in there. So.
Right.
Yeah.
But once you've, you've taken that snapshot in time, the historical numbers are accurate to that point. We're just adding more information to it.
Okay.
So the, the savings can move. You know, if we reach a period where the market actually outperforms the locked price of the mark, then, you know, that will start to erode it a little bit. But right now, we're at 1.9 million going forward. So we, we're pretty comfortable that we're, we're in the right direction here.
That's great.
Well, where I come from, that deserves some Colleen in.
Yeah, absolutely. Take it.
It was a team effort. It was.
Yeah, oh, the whole team, sure.
It was a team. It was good.
I will note that this is occurring on my watch.
As they say, timing is everything.
She'll remind you when not-so-good things happen on her watch, too.
I'm gone by then.
You know what it is a testament to? The change can be, you know what I mean? People are resistant to change, but you know, it's, what's good about change is you can change it again.
Absolutely, right.
Don't be hard on my colleagues.
I had to really, you know, pull teeth to get this to go, so I'm very happy.
That's great. Anything else, Chuck?
Um, I will open it up. I don't know whether, any of the commission members have questions about me.
It's just nice to see Chuck again. Mr. Soli says hi from the great beyond.
Phil and I actually discovered that we had relatives working in the office at Reading High School, Reading Memorial High School.
Yes.
Apparently Phil's father was a guidance counselor and sat adjacent to my cousin, who was the administrative office manager.
At Reading High?
At Reading High School.
Knew her well. Knew her well.
You have something to add? Yeah. Welcome, Chuck, by the way.
Thank you.
Has this load following ability to, to do the kind of purchasing you described, it's been around for some time now? I mean, what, what's, what's different now that we, that we do it now and weren't doing it 10 years ago, or?
I have absolutely no idea why Reading didn't do it 10 years ago. I was busy implementing it in Danvers at the time.
Change is difficult here. It's been difficult. So this is a big movement.
Well, the good news is, we did it. You did it. The team did it.
And you're going to ask us to vote on this next meeting? We're going to vote on it?
You will get a more formal presentation on it. I do have a draft of the agreement. We are making some final tweaks to it to hopefully improve its performance during the pilot phase. And then we will present the final document for approval and execution.
Great. Okay. Yes.
Yeah, Chuck, very briefly, I, I wouldn't mind a quick synopsis of the background. I haven't really got to know you well. I'd just be curious of where you came from and your experiences.
I was born in Ideal Hospital in Endicott, New York. No. I went to the University of Vermont. I studied civil engineering, graduated, went down and logged oil wells for a little while in Texas. Went out to Idaho, started a master's in transportation planning, applied for and was accepted to the Peace Corps, did two years in Morocco, which Hameed very much appreciates. Came back, took a job with an engineering company. The economy in Vermont tanked, which it does every two years anyway. And found myself going into Green Mountain Power and convincing them that I was a marketing analyst. Got involved with designing electric utility rates, had a phenomenal mentor. And after a couple of years, I got a call to go work at the Vermont Public Power Supply Authority. They were spending too much on rate cases. So I went up and built a group to provide rate case services to 15 municipals. And now the story gets interesting, because in the early eighties, the electric utility industry looked very much like it did in the fifties. There hadn't been a lot of transformation. Now, along comes integrated resource planning, energy efficiency portfolios, strategic management. ISO New England started up in 1999 and these small municipals all needed some sort of response to that. So I spent 25 years building models and Vermont comprehensively regulates its municipals. So everything that we did was being stood up in front of the Vermont Public Service Board. We, and I had all of those skills and started a consulting business. My first client was Danvers. Colleen had just let her then-power supply engineer retire. And I was brought in to do some training. She said, you know, well, we don't have anybody doing power supply. I said, so make me an offer. You wouldn't want to come down. Make me an offer. Oh, you wouldn't like it. It's a long commute. Make me an offer. Okay. She made me an offer. I've been down here and working ever since. While I was at VEPSA, I believe the comment was already made that I came down and did a cost-of-service study here in Reading. And as I said, I have family that was at Pratt Street for several generations. So I've got a history and some ties with the community here.
That's great.
Good. Very interesting.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Soli took great umbrage to the, to the study. It was only Mr. Soli could.
Colleen, couldn't have you found a more qualified candidate for? Kidding, Chuck. I'm joking. I'm joking.
Well, welcome aboard.
Welcome. Thank you. Great presentation. Thanks, Chuck. Okay.
Hameed, follow that one.
Hameed wants to do a really fast report here.
Oh, you want to speak from the podium, a guest speaker, huh?
And what do you, what do you think, Hameed? You have another engineer on the leadership team with you and Colleen. There's three of you engineers now.
That's not a bad thing.
They're taking over.
Okay, do you have a first slide?
Yep, that's clear.
Good evening. I'm glad to present the month of September report to the board. Okay, the first page and second page, you see that, you know, the capital improvement projects, the year-to-date spending and the remaining balances. So you see that, you know, for engineering operations, including the routine constructions, we spent $143,130. That brings the year-to-date to $453,426. The next slide, you see the facilities, IRD and IT capital improvement projects and purchases. It shows you the year-to-date spending and also the remaining in the budget on the far-right column. That brings the month of September spending $302,913. And you see on the far-right what was budgeted, year-to-date is $1,213,238. And it was budgeted $7.6 million approximately. That's the one that the board approved. And we've got $6.4 million almost left remaining to spend. The next slide is showing you the routine maintenance. Basically, these are the maintenance programs that were created back in 2014, 15. We are following that program. The transformer replacement through September, the pad mount transformers, these are underground-type transformers. We made more progress on those. So we are, replaced 32.12% of those and overhead approximately 22.5%. This is not really, you know, fast-paced. We've been trying to do with what we can with our available resources. So there is a proposal that is coming up that is going to go through GM and also Wendy, trying to expedite that program if we can, depending the budget availability and the fund availability. The pole inspection program, we inspected poles. So 246 poles have been replaced so far, 195 of those been transferred. So these transfers, they, we're taking them seriously. We're going through all. So these transfers, they're, we're taking them seriously, we're going through all four towns, and you're going to see that, you know, the numbers are decreasing. We don't have those crazy numbers like we used to have, like 100, 120, so we are making more transfers, so to get into those double poles that they're ugly. The inspection of the feeders, we've inspected all of these feeders, this is a quarterly program, that crews, they go out through the streets, making sure that everything is working properly, there are no signs of deterioration or failures, possible failures, and we take care of those. The manhole inspection program and porcelain cutout replacements, those are ongoing, as we're making improvements throughout the communities and also streets.
Tracy, can you put that on slideshow, it's on, it's not on the full screen, you know, the bottom, I think it's, bottom, right, move it over one?
Yeah, there you go.
One more over?
Yeah.
One more? I think that does it, doesn't it?
You can do it on the top, too.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, blue screen.
Oh, there it is.
There you go, that's much better.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So those are the programs that, you know, well, they're going through, as we go through these communities, we upgrade those, and we inspecting more manholes and replacing those porcelain cutouts. The more routine maintenance, on the next slide, you see the tree trimming, 69 spans have been taken care of in the month of September, 133 spans through the month of September, basically, year-to-date, we've spent, we've done. Substation maintenance, we do the infrared scan of the substations monthly, and also we do, every other month, we do the, all the parks, the industrial parks, and we haven't found any problems, not so far, especially during the summer, because of the good maintenance program that we have created and we are going through. The underground subdivisions upgrades, these are the ones that, you know, we've been talking about, we've got 60, 65 subdivisions through all four communities, that they need to be upgraded, so we have recently completed all of these, that, you know, you see the list, I'm not going to go over them, but lately, we completed the Shasta Drive, as well as, you know, the latest, the Long Hill Lane, these are the ones that, you know, they recently were finished, but these are the lists that, you know, were completed by September. The ones that are in progress, and the ones that they're working on, and we've got a long list of these subdivisions, and we go by the age, so we have a system, so as, you know, we see that, you know, and we inspect those transformers, the entire infrastructures, and then we prioritize which one is going to have to go next. So I wish we could do them all at once, but unfortunately, it won't be possible. But the ones that, you know, recently was finished, among these that, you know, you see that in progress, Turner Drive, which I would like to thank the select board, also the town administrator for North Reading to cooperate with us, because we went in front of the board, asking them to set a pole, to let us set a pole across the street, avoiding the crossing and digging on Route 62 with congested utilities. So they were very cooperative, and they approved that, and that project was just finished. So in the winter time, you have the loop available, just in case that, you know, there is a problem in that area, which I don't anticipate. And thank you, town of North Reading. Also, they finished the Green Briar Drive, that one, another critical one, that it's, you know, it was work in progress, was, these are big projects, you're talking about, you know, seven to 10 transformers that you have to go through, and it's been really a challenge trying to upgrade everything, because you touch one, and then before you know it, the whole neighborhood needs to be dug, or, you know, uprooted. So it's been going really good, and, but, we've got a long way to go, so, as I've been saying all along. The next one is the double poles, we got the ownership, it's basically 50-50 between RMLD and Verizon, we've got approximately 17,800 poles. The custodial for the Reading is split, North Reading is RMLD, and Linfield and Wilmington is Verizon, so that's how it goes. The next slide is...
Just a quick comment on that?
Sure.
You know, I look at the number of poles there, and I'm going, when 5G comes in, hopefully we'll be able to have a good revenue program from the carriers, to mount on our poles, and to connect to our fiber optic. Seriously? 17,000 poles, I mean, that's a huge amount.
My only concern on that is that, as long as they don't interfere with the electric operations.
Of course, right.
For maintenance of the poles.
Well, they might use more electricity for their amplifiers, right?
That's fine, but we are open-minded about it.
Okay.
That's a good note. Yeah, the next one is the engines, the engine program, that's the one that basically ball and court in which utility is going to go next, in order to do the transfers on the poles, the double poles. Linfield, you have, you see the numbers, the RMLD has 16 transfers, and one that it's in dispute. North Reading, we got, the RMLD has eight transfers, and nine pole, poles that, you know, we need to get out of the ground. RMLD has, in Redding, has 16 transfers, and pole bots to be removed are nine, and Wilmington, RMLD has 27 transfers, and four pole bots that they need to be removed. So you see that the numbers are going down, but, again, this is something that, you know, as we go through these communities and making more improvements, you know, you're going to see more and more poles. So when these numbers, they go up, I'm happy, but maybe, you know, we're not getting them fast enough, but we try to catch up and, you know, do remove, do the transfers as fast as we can. We don't have any control over Verizon and Comcast, that's the only problem, so it depends on how much resources they're putting to it. All right, the next slide is basically the reliability indices, you see all of them, the SAD, KD, and SAFE are below the national and also the regional averages, although I'm expecting the SAFE number, that it's getting close to the national, to the regional average. .61 for this year is going up, because of all of these outages that related to weather-related storms, and also the water table is high, these trees that they're falling.
Yes.
Left and right in all communities, so these are creating these pockets of outages that, you know, this number is going to go up.
When the water table's higher, more trees fall.
Oh, yeah, exactly, because especially the pine trees, the pine trees, they've got shallow roots.
Yeah.
And, you know, with, when the water table's high, the soil, you know, is not, the trees are not exactly, the roots are not as stable.
In the woods behind my house, at least five or six trees have fallen over.
Just because of the water?
Because of the water. The water just accumulated, we've had such water this last month, I mean, it's amazing.
It really has been, the whole, the whole fall, really.
Yeah.
That's the weather report of the RMLD board meeting right there.
That's right.
News commissioner, chair responsibility.
It's been exceptional, this year's been exceptional, I know. So the next slide shows the causes of outages, the five-year average is blue, and the red is basically the 2018 year-to-date. You see all of those numbers, they're coming down, although it's getting better and better. Some years, it's going to, these are going to vary, depending on the weather conditions, storms, and, you know, here, but we are moving in the right direction. That's what it shows, basically. That concludes my report, if the board has any questions, by all means, yes?
Yeah, just curious, and maybe we talked about, so starting in 2019.
Right.
Will, will you be looking at a new fiscal year comparing to January to June last year, or how are we going to be?
We're going to, we're going to go by the calendar year, we're still on the fiscal year, but what we did, the budget that, you know, was presented, it looked at the calendar year moving forward, so we're going to get into calendar year. So these six months, we're going to close it as fiscal year, and then we're going to start the new calendar year as of January 1st, yes.
Okay, thanks, Hameed.
You're welcome.
You want to buy some things too, Hameed?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to go to my bid?
You ready for the motion?
Yep, motion.
Move that proposal 2019-02 for 750 MCM, whatever that means, 15 KV power cable be awarded to Arthur J. Hurley Company, Inc., for $124,488 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 164, Section 56D on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second?
Second.
Discussion background.
Sure, by all means, the MCM stands for Million Circular Mill, these are the size of the cables for underground getaways out of the stations, we are upgrading those per booth and associates' recommendations, so you've seen that in the budget for Station Four and Station Three. So out of that, $124,488, really, in reality, $97,403, it belongs to the capital improvement projects, and the balance, which is $27,085, is for inventory stock. So that's what you basically voted on, or voting on, or voted on.
Okay. Any other questions for Hameed or comments?
Mr. Jim, I just want to say that I intend to abstain from this vote, because Arthur J. Hurley is a client of a client.
To conflict, okay.
And probably puts maybe a nickel in my pocket.
Okay, all right. All those who are voting in favor, put a nickel in Phil's pocket.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Phil. And Hameed. And you have something else to buy, Hameed?
Yeah, another one.
You have two more, three more.
Two more, three more.
You don't get to the one.
You want to keep on reading?
Yeah, let me keep going. Move that bid 2019-6 for electric utility excavation, including emergency excavation and construction services be awarded to Tim Zanelli Excavating LLC for a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000 per year without written approval pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 39M, as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of general manager.
Second?
Second.
All right, background, Hameed?
Okay, this is basically, we are hiring contractors for emergency work, and, you know, the stuff that, as we go through this development, that we need to uproot everything, and, you know, so we don't have to go for every single one of them to, out to bid. Obviously, this is for anything under $50,000, so if it goes over $50,000, it's going to be a bid, formal bid. So these are for routine construction type, that, you know, we need to dig the streets, and, you know, need some construction work to do ahead of this schedule in order to be able to continue our improvements. So we sent a bid out to 10 or 15 bidders, and the lowest responsible, responsive bidder was Tim Zanelli, that, you know, he's been also the lowest for the past three or four years that I've been here, so, because he's a local contractor. So out of that, $90,000 belongs to the capital authorization projects, this is the one that we use for, the ones that, you know, the board voted on, and approximately $110,000 is coming out of the operational budget for unforeseen conditions, you know, emergencies and, you know, oil leaks or anything that, you know, we need to...
Any questions or comments for Hameed? Okay, all those in favor? 5-0-0. That's it, Hameed, right?
Thank you, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Maybe I messed up.
What's that?
I might have messed up on you.
No, no, you know what, Phil and I were looking at two different sheets, we thought they're, on my sheet, it was on one side, on this sheet, it was on the other, so, you didn't mess up.
I said the same thing.
Yep. We were just double counting, Tracy.
Thank you, Hameed.
Thanks, Hameed, always, good work.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, general discussion, RMLD board meetings, we have Thursday, December 20th. I think that's, we already cleared that for everybody, right? And...
So that's no longer tentative?
It's locked in. And then cab meeting, you just told us about one.
The 19th.
It's the one the day before that. Do we have somebody doing that one?
Yeah, I, I may have a conflict, because I didn't know the date, but I'll work it out.
Will you be discussing the payment to the town at that meeting?
You available? If we have the meeting.
Yeah, so probably...
September 19th, you're on for January, I'll do January.
Probably there's going to be discussions of the payment.
I just booked a training.
Tom, there's probably discussion payment of the town, so I probably can go for you, I should go for you on that one.
He's going to go for you.
Because there's going to be a discussion of the payment of the town.
He's going to do the 19th.
All right.
Okay.
Tom seems upset by that.
He's disappointed.
He's feigning disappointment.
I almost had it, it was right within my grasp.
You almost got it. A couple disappointed guys to my right here.
Well, this thing, welcome to come.
But you are lucky to do it in January.
Well, no, with a little luck, you may have the town payment issue.
And select board meeting, you both are going to try to go, it sounds like.
Right, they let us know.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Without any conflict, hopefully.
And are there any, any last comments by anybody? All right, let's do this last piece. Want to make a motion?
Do we have anything to discuss in executive session? Is there anything to discuss?
There is an agenda, yeah.
Do we have stuff for executive session?
I can't give you updates on the substation.
Yeah, I think, yes, for...
Yes, okay.
So we're going to do that, okay, go ahead, let's do this.
Move that the RMLD board of commissioners go into executive session to consider the purchase of real estate, and to discuss confidential, competitively sensitive, and proprietary information in relation to making, selling, or distributing electric power, energy, and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Okay, roll call vote. Go second, all right.
Mr. Pacino, I.
Mr. O'Rourke, I.
Mr. Hennessy, I.
Mr. Stenagai.
All right, that is the end of our meeting.
Excellent.
Good work.
Yeah.